But you can see the difference in left.
It all separates.
Yeah. New York sour.
I'm close to being good.
I was just told, I don't hate the messenger.
Psychiatrists, psychologists, doctors, lawyers.
Yeah. Courtney's in charge of refreshments for this evening. Courtney's in charge of refreshments. What's the over-under, Mr.?
Uh, twenty.
Twenty?
Over or under twenty?
Twenty minutes.
There's no.
You can't say right at twenty.
No, that's under.
That's the line, the line is.
And it's, I guess it's up to twenty, but, you know, so nineteen minutes and fifty-nine seconds, you win, twenty minutes. Guess if you're saying that second.
I'd like to call the Mammell City Council meeting to order. First order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance. I'll ask Councilmember Vapirzand to lead us in that tonight.
Let's pray, Heavenly Father, we love you, thank you for a good day. Thank you for the strength that you provided for us all to be here. Thank you for the citizens that have come out this evening to take interest in what's done in these chambers. Even though there's not a lot on the agenda this evening, everything that comes before us holds great weight. And it's important to the citizens of Mammell. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to help make these decisions, and we realize that all wisdom comes from you. And so this evening, we ask for that wisdom, and may we follow it. May you be pleased with all that we say and do here. We do pray for our military men and women serving overseas and here for their protection. And daily, we're bombarded with the news of other tragic events in our nation. May we truly be one nation under God, and may our hearts be in tune with you. If that were the case, then they would be in tune with each other. We pray that that would be the case here this evening, and that it would flow from those of us who are in leadership. Again, we thank you for Jesus and all that he's done for us. Bless this city council meeting this evening, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Under special guests and announcements, we have Boy Scout Troop 295, the Dragon Patrol, with us tonight, and they're working on their first-class rank, is that what they're working on? And so we're glad to have them here tonight and be a part of our council meeting, and they're gonna, we're gonna, after the meeting, I'm gonna sit around and talk to them for just a minute, so, but we're glad they're here tonight and appreciate them attending our meeting. Next item is the approval of the minutes from July the third, regular meeting. All the council, all the council members have a copy of those minutes in their packets. Are there any questions or additions to those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Have a motion as second to approve the July third regular meeting. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. I have no public comment cards tonight, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the financial statement review, which is done at the second meeting of each month. You have a copy, or you were emailed out a copy of the financials for June. Is there any questions on the June financials?
Mayor, if I may make a comment.
All right.
I would like you guys to hold off on your review of the financials that were submitted. I noticed something, some information that was omitted, my apologies, and I would like to re-submit those and give you guys adequate time to review them before we make a motion to approve, if that's okay.
When do you expect to have those out?
Before the end of the week.
Okay.
Councilmember Mosley?
I assume it was the last two columns.
You would assume correct, yes.
Okay. I noticed, are we gonna eventually get back in the routine of putting them into the packet, or are you gonna always try and mail them out separately?
No, I definitely want to include them in the packet, that is my goal, once we get a director in place and they've had the opportunity to get acclimated with the process.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll hold the financials till they're completed.
Good to see that our permitting is way up.
It is way up.
Lot of building.
Yeah, there is quite a bit of building going on. Yep, yep. The next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion as second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. We had no unfinished business. Under new business, we have the first reading of ordinance number nine thirty-nine, no smoking ordinance for Mammell Center on the Lake. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
We had enacted an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number Nine Thirty-Nine, an ordinance prohibiting smoking and the use of e-cigarettes on the grounds of the Mammell Center on the Lake.
There's, Ms. Vogler is in the audience, if there's any questions on that, or would you like to make a statement, Ms. Vogler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted the opportunity to speak on secondhand smoke. The beautiful facility, Center on the Lake, has a number of exits to, of course, to the front and the back, but especially on the back, and we have a great patio on the backside. And we really just want to encourage not to have smoking at the facility, on the premises, other than in the parking, parking lot in parked areas and parked cars. The reason for that is secondhand smoke, with seniors especially, it's just very serious to have secondhand smoke. Any amount of exposure can cause the effects of the blood vessels, increasing the risk of having a heart attack, and that really causes more alarm when individuals have heart disease, they're especially high risk of suffering adverse effects from breathing secondhand smoke. And so I just really want to take precautions to not have that occur on the back patio and in the back area. We do, of course, want to, as the weather gets a little cooler, it's a little warm right now, but as the weather does get a little cooler, we do want to have activities out on that back patio and on the back lawn, and we just feel that this ordinance will really help, help that facility, so I appreciate your support.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, ma'am. I'm all for this. I just, the only question I had was, it says it excludes somebody from smoking inside a parked car in the parking lot in a designated parking area. Is there, is there a specific reason for that?
Yes, sir, we do have a couple of staff members. I've got, I'll have four staff members that are currently smoking, and they are currently smoking either in their vehicle or right next to their vehicle at this moment, at this time. And so, in meeting with the staff members, they reviewed the ordinance before it was put into the packet, and they were fine. They're already at that level, so they were fine with that, and that's why we chose that statement.
And we allow them to still do that, but that way, nobody knows they're doing it.
We're not wanting to create the secondhand smoke. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thanks for bringing this up. I mean, I have no problem with it, but you made a comment about smoking in your vehicles or in the parking lots. Now, in reading this ordinance, it specifically states that you can't smoke in the parking lot, which is fine with me, but.
I apologize, I meant in their parked.
Vehicles.
In the parked vehicles, in the parks, in the parking spaces, yes, sir. I misspoke.
They're gonna wanna run the air conditioner anyway, so, because it's hot out there.
Most likely.
So that should be good. Okay. That's all.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the ordinance, or for Ms. Vogler? Okay. This will be on second reading at the next council meeting, then.
Thank you.
Next item is to request to form a Mammell All-Inclusive Playground Committee, and Councilmember Anderson had discussed this with me several weeks back, and then he came forward with a proposal and a committee, and so we, he visited with City Attorney Norris and thought that, he doesn't want a standing, a permanent committee, this, so he just wanted some, a motion from the council so that everybody was aware of what was going on, and so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Anderson to explain what the whole goal of the committee is and everything.
Thank you, Mayor. As anybody that knows me knows that I really care about having an inclusive society and inclusive community. I do work closely with kids and adults with disabilities, and there are many communities around us that have moved forward and had, have playgrounds that are more inclusive for, for kids that may not have the same abilities, physically abilities, that, that some other kids have. And I think that it's time for Mammell to, you know, we're Mammell at play, we even have been recognized for it. So I think it's time for us to start moving forward in that direction, and it's something that's near and dear to my heart, so I wanted to form this committee. And the reason that we have, we need to form this committee is that I want to look at opportunities for us to get grants or get private funding through donations and things like that, and we need to have an inclusive committee to drive that. And so I've talked to many different people that have, that have helped with this process in other cities, and they said this was the best way to go, and so we're starting from the ground up. And so what I wanted to start with was two council members and three citizens from Mammell, and we can start this committee for the project of creating a all-inclusive playground. Once that project has been finished, then the committee will dissolve. And it's not gonna be, like the mayor had mentioned, it's not gonna be a free, or a continuous standing committee. So if, I've already talked to the citizens, which was Michelle McLennahan, Ashley Washam, Melissa Dawson, and they were really on board with this. They have, they either work with people that have disabilities or have actually family members that have physical or sensory disabilities. So they, you know, they have a unique perspective that they can bring to the council, and will have some, you know, participation from the community, which that's, you know, that's the whole goal. And then I asked for myself and another council member to be on that committee, just so that we can have that connection. And if Terry Williams would, would volunteer to be on that committee, then that would be the, the whole committee of five. Now, of course, we're gonna invite Philip Rayburn to come to those meetings. I didn't want to, to have to burden him with being at the meeting as a voting member, but it's definitely gonna be affecting him, so, and, and of course, the public will be invited, but we'll just have the five as voting members so far. Did I cover everything? I think I did. Any questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but I'd really like to better understand this before we go forming a committee. I think this is much like federal entitlements, entitlements, once you get it started, it's real hard to stop it. I just, there's some things I'm curious. You keep, I heard the word all-inclusive playground. What, can you define that?
Well, there's specially designed playgrounds that allow for kids that are in wheelchairs or on alternative forms of, of walking aids or things to have access to the, to the playground. And it's also in the design that the way the playground has access to the, to the adjoining parking lot, and there's many different ways that, that you go into designing it and making it universal. And what universal means is that anybody will be able to use that particular playground. Universal can be used in anything. Whenever you use a bathroom that's universally designed, it's, it's designed for everybody, people that are in chairs, people that are walking, or people that are in shortened stature, and that's the same kind of concept with the, with a playground, an all-inclusive playground. So there's many different, different ways that you can design it, and of course, that will be part of the committee, is making those kind of decisions, where we're gonna place the park, how we're gonna try to achieve funding, because obviously, we're not gonna be able to achieve the funding through other things, like some other cities have used the A and P tax, or, or they've used grants or things like that. So, I mean, I'm sorry, not grants, they've used general funds. But what we need to do is to be able to try to chase a grant or get a grant, and in order to do that, we need to have a community participation, and that's gonna probably be in the form of that committee. So it's not something that's a federal thing, that like you said, that's gonna continue on, it's just a, it's just a committee that will help start this process going, and, and then once the project's over, then, then it will dissolve.
So, so you're seeing it much as a task force, but we're just calling it committee, is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. Same scenario. Now, so, so you've expressed one need here, and that need is towards handicap participation. That's, that's your focus.
Well, it's, it's all-inclusive, is what I really like to say. I don't, I don't, I never want to single out a person. You, you don't talk about a person by their, you don't describe somebody by their disability. That's, that's really not the inclusive type of, of way that you wanna talk about. I, I don't, I don't talk about you, the person, I don't say the guy that wears glasses or the guy that has a beard, I, I talk about Ken Saunders, who might have to use glasses. So what I wanna do is to make sure the dialogue is all-inclusive, it's for every kid, not just kids in wheelchairs, it's for every kid that wants to play on that playground. It's just designed in a way that even kids that are in chairs or are in walkers or different types of assisted devices can also access that playground.
Okay. Well, I guess where I'm headed is I'm trying to figure out the purpose of this committee, and, and I may not have been politically correct with my handicap statement, but I'm still trying to get the focus of this group. What will they be doing? What is the need? And then, of course, we can move over to other things. What authority do they have? Do they report back to the council? Is this a budgetary item that we're gonna have to deal with in the fall?
Well.
And you mentioned general fund, but I mean, there may be some expense involved. What about bylaws? I'm, I'm just trying to look at the whole picture of this committee.
Right. First of all, I wanted to form the committee before we, if, if this, if this did not pass, then there's no reason for, to move forward. But what we wanna do is, I mean, the reason I have two council members and the reason I have citizens is that it is gonna be a reporting structure that we'll report back to the city council, because if there's any kind of grants that we're gonna try to utilize, nine times out of ten, there's some sort of matching component. We also wanna be able to start a dialogue with, with designing them, and it's, it's, it's something that's, we're gonna have to, if we wanted to get somebody to help us design or to, to help us move this project forward, it's better to do it with a community vehicle than it would be from a mandate from the city.
Is this not something Parks and Recs can handle? Because they manage our parks and the park equipment. I mean, what are we doing on this committee, figuratively we? What are we doing on here that Parks and Recs either is not doing or cannot do?
We're trying to get alternative financing besides using public funds.
Oh, you know I love that. Have you talked to Philip Rayburn about this? I know you said you had talked to the mayor, but.
I talked to the mayor, I, I don't.
I've talked to Philip about it.
And what was his attitude?
He is okay with, in fact, they've actually looked at some of the issues. He's sitting in the back of the audience, back there.
I didn't see you back there.
But Burns Park is doing exactly this. The city of North Rock just built an exclusive playground in Burns Park. Now, they had a sinkhole that developed and caused an issue with the grand opening and all that, but during the construction, so they've had a fundraiser to try to repair that and all, but there's other cities' bribes doing this, and so this is just a component. Philip and I even talked about possible locations that it could be. It would probably be in a different location than Lake Willistee, because we have a playground there. It would not be where we already have a playground, but it would be somewhere where we then need to replace a playground, or somewhere where we need a playground at, in a different area of town. So yes, we've had discussions about it, and the, Mr. Rayburn is on a lot of, in his role, he assists or attends meetings that are other groups, such as a sports association. We don't do everything in Parks and Rec, we let other people manage things, and so this brings ideas from people that, that deal with citizens that have the disabilities that we've mentioned tonight and all that, and so they may have better ideas than we have because they live with it, they deal with it on a daily basis, and so therefore, their ideas are fresh and new, and this is what this child needs, or this is what this student needs, or this is what my child needs, to help. And it's not just the physical activity, it's sensory, too. It's, it's what can they go and help develop their centuries? And, you know, there's, there's a lot of kids that are mobile, but they still need sensory help and development, and the playground can be that for them, and they need interaction with kids a lot of times, and so that, that facilitates it there.
Okay.
I wanted to briefly answer your question about the, what type of entity would it be? It'd be very similar to the sign ordinance committee, the bond task force, whether we call it a task force or committee, it's kind of interchangeable, it's not creating, which is why we didn't do the ordinance, we're not creating like a standing committee that has some authority on its own, it's really an advisory committee.
Okay, okay. Good answer, from all of you. Okay, but we don't anticipate that we're gonna get hit with a budget line item on this, is that correct?
Well, I, well, if there, if there's a match on the grant, you will get hit with a budget line item.
And how, who's gonna write the grant? The city or?
That's what we're gonna explore with the committee. There's many different ways we can go, that, there's, there are vendors that will help with the process that use a third party. There's, there's design groups that have done this before, and they already know kind of, you know, we're not gonna reinvent the wheel, and so that's what I wanna do, is to be able to have a vehicle so we can bring in some of these consultants that will kind of help us walk through this, because I have never tried to build a, a playground in the eight years or almost eight years that I've been here, but I definitely wanna make this happen. So I do have the, you know, have the vehicle right now to where we can form a group and maybe explore this idea. It's not committing the city to anything except for looking at the ideas and maybe exploring the possibility of including another section of our citizenship.
I'm fine with all that, only have one other question. I noticed that we have the five people that you mentioned on this, at least initial committee, should this be put out to, in a public notice, so other people have a chance to participate?
It's a public meeting, anybody can participate.
Yeah, but.
But it's not, it's not, it's not a, I mean, it's, it's not what we typically do on committees. We typically appoint people to committees. Now, if we're putting them on a board or a commission that has authority, such as the Civil Service Commission, then we do an advertisement for that, but I don't know that we've ever done an advertisement to form committees or task forces.
They're usually volunteer-based.
Yeah.
Okay, but they will be public meetings.
They're public meetings because there's two council meeting members there, so they have to be public meetings, and anybody and everybody is welcome to attend those. They're just like, it's just like the sign task force committee that City Attorney Norris just referenced. We appointed those, I, you know, I appointed those, we appointed those, somebody, but they were not advertised positions, and they meet regularly, and they meet, their notices, their meetings are noticed.
Never got a chance to thank you for that one, but anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, well, you've answered the questions well, it was just thoughts that went through my head whenever I first read this. I'll be voting for it, but, so, but thank you.
Councilmember Timmons?
I think it's a good idea. I think that we should, we should have somebody from Parks and Rec on your committee, because they might have a different view or insight of, of different, because they're the professionals with this.
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, and I, I mean, I can't, I'm not gonna speak for Philip, he can come up and speak if he wants to, but I told him he better be prepared to be on another committee, is what I told him when this came up, so, or attend the meetings at least, so.
Or him or somebody on his management team.
I'm on, I'm on several committees, tree board, baseball, softball. I don't get to vote, but I'm there, because I know, I know playgrounds. We've done them before, and this is something all-inclusive that I talked about, well, me and you talked about in the budget last year. It is something that's on, that was on my radar, and if this speeds that up, then I'm fine with that, too.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
I, I wasn't trying to exclude, exclude Parks and Rec, I just wanted to give them the opportunity to not have to commit to something on the ground floor. If it comes to the committee that we realize that we're gonna need city involvement, then, you know, then of course, we're gonna ask for him to come in and get his consulting. All it is, is it just keeps the group small enough that we can make this happen quicker, because anybody that's ever been on a committee or a board knows that the bigger the board is, the, the slower the process is, and all I'm trying to do is to, to help a segment of our community that's, that's being underserved, and I'm trying to do it responsibly as far as financial way. I want any part, type of participation that I can get.
I'll be at the meetings.
Right.
I don't need a position or a title, or a vote, but I'll definitely put in my two cents. And one thing on the playground, my, on the inclusive part, most of all our new, or all our newer playgrounds, the plastic colorful ones, not the wooden old ones, are handicap accessible. They, that means there's a part of that playground that, that child or person could access, but this part over here probably couldn't. So all our playgrounds have accessibility, but they're not all-inclusive to where they could actually do everything, and then other kids would definitely be able to do it, if that helps.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rayburn.
And this is why.
Councilmember Timmons?
This is why I think one of his people needs to be on the committee.
He just said they don't wanna be on. He just said he didn't wanna be on.
Him personally. I'm talking about somebody from his team, like, there's things that are happening at the park or something already, that's been already done, or something that we need to be doing, that I think, as I say, they're the professionals at the Park and Rec, so just to have one person at that meeting, the committee meetings or task force meetings or whatever they are, I think it would be well devised. I really don't wanna vote for it unless there's somebody from Parks and Rec on that.
What if it was amended to have an advisor from the Park and Rec, not a voting member, but an advisor?
Why can't it be a voting member?
Well, because then you're gonna wind up with six people, and you have to, well, you need to have odd numbers to break ties on committees or task force. That's, that's my thoughts behind it.
I'd be okay with that.
Okay.
I've been on, I've been on committees where we went and pushed stuff through, and then it was an afterthought, you know, one of the main people that needed to be there wasn't there, and then you're backtracking, you know.
Well, that's not my intention.
I, I know it's not. I know it's not. But I just don't want that to happen because it has happened on something that I've done.
I agree with an advisor. I think that's a good idea.
Yes. We can make a motion, I'll make a motion that we add a member of, or a staff member from Parks and Rec as an advisory position on this council. I'm sorry. Committee.
Did I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to add a member of the sta, from the staff of the Parks and Recreation Department as an advisory member to this committee. So, and I've got a bunch of lights on, but they were already on, so we're, this would be a question on adding those Parks and Rec?
Correct. Correct.
All right.
Is that necessarily to be a specific person, or, because it could be a rotating person, depending upon Phillip's needs?
That's why I said it was a staff member.
So, it would be, the way I understand it, Phillip would have somebody there for every committee meeting, but it may not be an assigned person.
He's already stated he's going to be at every meeting.
He's, he'll probably be there for every meeting.
Yeah.
Because I know him.
We're spinning in redundancy here.
But I'm just saying, does it have to be an assigned person?
No.
No.
Okay, good.
Okay, is there any other question on the motion to add, and I don't even know that we need to do this, but the motion to add a staff member from Parks and Rec to, as an advisory member to the committee? Not all is in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I had lights on, so Councilmember Vaperson?
Will you remind us that this is going to come before building and planning? This is going to come before us several times. So, nobody's shoving anything through anything here. I think it's a brilliant idea, and I make a motion that we accept it as it is stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the motion, or to form a Moll-Mell All-Inclusive Playground Committee, as amended here tonight. I still have some lights on, so Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah. Actually, assuming this was just a committee to kind of look at, look at the idea, and, you know, that sort of thing. It sounds like it's a bigger, more goal-oriented committee, and so, I'm actually less sure I'm going to vote for it now. But I, I'm sorry, I think it's, it's kind of a neat idea. This is all real foreign to me. I had never even heard of such a thing until tonight. I don't, what are, you know, can regular people use these playgrounds, or are they excluded, or how does this normally go?
Regular people?
Or whatever. I know you're...
Typical and non-typical?
Yes.
Yes. It's universal.
Okay.
Is the intent.
And what are, what is the typical cost of something like that? Do you have an example you're looking at, or something?
That's what we need to explore with that committee, because it can go all the way upwards of half a million dollars if you want to. It's however how big you want to build it, you know? And so, that's, of course, not the goal, to build the biggest and the better, best. It's just the, the goal is to make sure that we're serving a section of the, the citizenship that's being under, underserved.
Have we had, have we had any complaints or anything like that here in town? Or are we, are we fixing something that's not...
I wouldn't call it complaints. It's just...
Requests.
Requests.
Requests, okay. So, there's, there's some...
We have needs.
There's some, there's some facets of these type of playgrounds that, that are not what we've currently got, I guess, what you're saying.
And you probably would be surprised that the, there is a large population of adults and children with various different disabilities in the community. And, and of course, they're family members, and immediate and extended. So, it just gives an opportunity for a more inclusive community.
Okay. I'm not sure I'm going to vote. It kind of depends on, on what the stated purpose is in the motion there, and I'll, I'll do the best I can. I'm not for it, but I'm not against the actual end result. So, I'm all for looking into things. So, anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's hard to say no with a young Boy Scout troop sitting here and listening to us. I want them to know we're on your side. And sometimes adults do a lot of talking, and we don't make sense either. I have no objection to all of this. I just, in listening, my question is, is what about our, our playgrounds? Are we, are they deficient? Do we need to build more playgrounds? What is it that we need? Do we know what we need? What, what kind of equipment? Every time I go to the conference, I'm not, you know, I go and I spend time with the various purveyors, and I brought things back with me about playground equipment and everything. But I'd like to see a report on some kind of review. Tell us what we do, where are we in our, in our recreation and our playgrounds and things? So, let's start with ground zero and find out where we are, and what we might can do to go forward with it. You know, we've got a committee, but like Alderman Sanders had said, you know, what, what kind of process are we going to get into here? And all of a sudden, we've already made a couple of amendments. I don't even know exactly what are we going to vote on, Mr. Mayor, so I will request that we clearly restate exactly what we're going to vote on. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Williams?
I think this is, what you're saying is, that's the, the whole point of the committee, is to get to the bottom of all that, and find out where we are with our current playgrounds, you know, to start from ground level. But it's also us being proactive, because, you know, other communities have these all-inclusive playgrounds that are very, very important, and they're very well utilized. And I think that since, you know, you brought up the fact that we are the playful community, the playful city, we ought to be able to make that accessible to all people. Now, I know, from my hometown, we have an all-inclusive where, you know, it's safe for everybody. So, people in wheelchairs can play and be safe. They're not going to be hurt. They have, they have, they can do, they can climb things, and hang on to things, and do things, and just, you know, have a good fun day at the park. And I think this is us being proactive in that. And I'm excited about the committee getting going, and finding out more, and, and exploring more, and being able to come back to you guys, to all of us, with a report on how we can do this and where we can go, and what we need.
Okay. And let me answer two questions. One is, if you go back and read the strategic plan, I don't know that it specifically mentions playgrounds, but it talks about the number of parks you need for the number of citizens you have. So, if you quit building playgrounds or parks, and you're growing, you're going to get behind. There's no doubt. The last playground that I remember being built was at the softball fields. So, that would have been about 2008. So, the last playground that we built in Moll-Mell is going on 10 years by the time you build another one. And so, whether, so I can't tell you for sure that, where, where do we fall in line with other communities or anything like that? But you've got to continue to grow your, your facilities as the city grows. So, I can answer that one. The, the only change we made tonight is we added to the list that you were given was that an advisory member would be a staff member from Parks and Recreation Department. Other than that, you're voting on a committee that has three citizens on it, and two council members that were listed on the council agenda. And they're on the board up there. The only addition would be a staff member from Parks and Recreation. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, one thing we've talked about is first playgrounds over the years, and I know Phillip Rayburn's brought up Splash Park. And, and that's something I've paid a lot of attention to when I've been going around our city, you know, the metro area, and other cities, and that sort of thing. And I've kind of gotten to where I think Splash Parks are a good idea. And I know they cost a couple hundred thousand, something like that. But anyway, it...
They're, they're basically just like a playground. It's like...
Yeah, it's a water park.
As I said, the Splash Park, it's, it's however big you want to build it. It's got amenities. You can add more, take less, build up, help. So, it's a definite price. You really can't give one until you know how big you want to make it, or what amenities you want, and then that's where your price comes in.
Something like that, could it be considered an all-inclusive type thing?
Yeah. It's a universally designed playground.
I mean, would that be something you guys would be looking at? Or are you looking at something dry?
I have no idea, because the committee would be driving that.
All right.
The playground on Woodland, the green and yellow one, when it was put in, that was, I'm not sure what year, 20... Steve was still here. But anyway, that was a hundred thousand for that one. And that was, but that's been well over 10 years.
Yeah.
More than, more like 12 to 15. And then, and what you're looking at on there, and be a big, on this one, too, is the servicing. Usually, the servicing is about the same price as the play system.
Okay. Is a, is something like an all-inclusive park higher on a priority list, as far as you're concerned? Or would a water park serve more people in Moll-Mell, you think?
Both of them would be in the location that, what I'd imagined out here for where the tennis courts are...
Yeah.
Was an all-inclusive playground, a Splash Park, parking shade, and finishing out that whole area there at Lake Valencia.
Okay.
The only problem with the Splash, Splash Pad, it's only good for about half the year.
That's true.
You can't use it in the wintertime. So, it has to be shut down, basically, because then you have skating rink.
My suggestion to the committee would be, let's do a master park plan if we're, if they're agreeable for that location. That's kind of what I had in mind. Because one thing we've tried to do, and we've got a park master plan, and there's a lot of information in, in the strategic plan.
Strategic plan, yeah.
What we're trying to do is have a playground about a mile from each, where you, you go less than a mile or less, and you should be able to access a playground. Sometimes we're, we're a little heavy on the older part of Moll-Mell, because we've still got some of those wood structures. But those are, we've taken those out because they're rotten, and we've got to look at that within the next couple of months, to see what, where we at there. But centrally, not counting the schools, there's not a playground. The closest one would be probably Woodland or Lake Williston.
Williston, okay.
And this would be the center of town. So, that would be kind of a suggestion to look at, depending on what the committee's for.
Yeah, I, I mean, what I would support is just something, an exploratory committee to maybe the overall thing. Because I feel like there's so many options. I don't want to, I don't want to see us run down the path on something that's kind of like maybe, for example, a skate park. I don't know how many people actually use the skate park, but I would, you know, whatever's the best overall for our, our needs of our residences. I just, I hate to start a train that's towards something that I might not support. So, that's my worry. As long as you, I could probably support it, if you guys can look at all those options in the big scheme of things, and have some guy like Phillip on there, maybe throwing in some thoughts.
Sure.
Councilmember Timmons?
The good thing about this, if I'm not mistaken, with the task force or the committee, everybody's welcome to attend and put in their input.
Right.
And it...
Go ahead.
It, it won't have, nothing can be done as far as financial or commitment, or anything before you get it approved, like Councilmember Vaperson said, through two different governing bodies. So, you know, for all intents and purposes, it is an exploratory committee. And, you know, it just gives us the vehicle to start this process. So, however you want to, to name it, it's just giving us a vehicle to start this process from the ground up. And, you know, and, you know, you always have to start somewhere. Sorry.
Well, and the only thing, there was, the question was asked earlier, and I got thinking, would it be in a budget item this year? I don't know that it would, because the task force is being formed the third week of July. The budget process starts September for staff, and so, October, November for councils. So, you know, I don't know that you would see something this year, but you might see something next year then, if there was a proposal, unless there was, unless there's a hundred percent grant. Yeah, unless it's a hundred percent grant, or something like that.
Okay, good.
Councilmember Saunders, you...
We've had so much discussion, I've forgotten. Do we have a motion to approve this?
We do. Yes, sir.
In a second, okay.
Yes, sir, we do.
I was just going to make it if we didn't.
No, we've got one. Councilmember Vaperson made it, and Councilmember Anderson seconded, yep. Which was opposite of what I thought would happen, but that's okay.
He was ready to go.
Yeah, he was ready to go. All right. If there's no other discussion, we have a motion to form an all-inclusive playground committee that consists of three citizens, two council members, and an advisory member that is a staff member from Parks and Recreation Department, and the names are listed on the screen. Is there any other discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item is mayor's comments. I only had one on there when the agenda went out, but I do have a couple more I need to bring up. The first item is Fourth Fest and fireworks. We included an email from Chief Williams in your packet that indicated we had 14 calls ranging from July the first through July the fifth. And we had, that concerned fireworks. So, we had four calls on July the third, and we had eight on the fourth. And four of those calls that were made on the fourth were when the discharge of fireworks were legal. So, people were complaining or upset about that. And then four were received after hours. No citations were issued. So, overall, that's probably the, one of the lowest number of phone calls that I can remember we've gotten through a Fourth of July process. And then, what I wanted to mention on Fourth Fest is that we had a, we had a really good crowd turnout for several things. The parade, we had a really good crowd turnout for that. We wound up having 10 entries in the parade. And then we had a large crowd watching the cardboard boat races. They funneled right in, I think, from the parade into watch the cardboard boat races. And then, there was a large group that left after that. But then, around eight o'clock, we had a large group of people start coming back in. Think they all went to eat, or have a cookout, or something like that. And then, they came back for the music, and then for the fireworks. And I was not outside the park, but as I understand it, it was a lot of people outside the park, around Track D, Kroger, US Pizza, and, and the median of Odom, and the Boulevard, and wherever else they could find a place to park.
South Shore.
South Shore. So, it was, but we had a large crowd. And someone that, that I know that lived in Little Rock was trying to leave Moll-Mell to go back to Little Rock, and he said, everybody was going back to Little Rock. So, we must had a large group of people come in from outside the city. And then, someone else told me the same thing, that as you went out the north into town, they said it was a traffic jam around the come-and-go out there. People turning left on 365 and all, so. Chief, did you need to add anything, or fireworks?
No, sir. I have no questions.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was just going to say, this, this is the first year since I've been in Alderman that I didn't have emails and phone calls the following day after the Fourth of July. I still haven't gotten a complaint. I had two complaints before the Fourth of July got here, and I sent you an email on them. And I don't know if you all did some things differently, or whatever, but it showed up in the right places at the right times, or what. But there didn't seem to be any problem.
I hope one of the things that helped was, we did put on our Facebook and on our website, the requirements for group size, and hours, and things like that. So, I'm hoping that people knew going in to, to the Fourth, when they could and couldn't, and how many people they could have. Now, we did, we also had a couple of complaints that were probably preemptive. They called just to tell us they'll be calling. And we get that. We understand. One of the things that I learned from a previous job in Little Rock, when people think that we're not taking their fireworks complaint seriously enough, they'll say, I think it sounds like gunfire. And, and it may be, but it's traditionally fireworks. And we say, well, we're going to respond to them the same way. We're going to be careful. But we, we are going to respond. And we've responded to some calls. But I do think, and I've told the mayor before, I think by and large, the people of Moll-Mell want to play by the rules, and will. I was impressed again by how the, the number of fireworks that you hear stopped at the appropriate time. Certainly, there were still some. There were still some the next day. But by and large, people quit when they're supposed to. And then, when police officers are called and asked them to knock it off, almost every time they will. So, I think we want to do the right things by and large, and I think we do.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, the item, one of the items that I didn't have on the agenda is, I just want to bring up that we, there's an item that's before the Planning Commission this month, and it's a curb cut onto the Boulevard across from Pine Forest, which is a part of the Pine Forest Bypass Project. And so, that's before the Planning Commission. It will be coming to the city council on our August the seventh meeting. And so, I want to go ahead and prepare y'all. I'm going to request three readings at that time, and an emergency clause, so that we can move forward with that project as soon as possible. The roadway's actually under construction, but they cannot start the work on the access point to the Boulevard without those authorities, and the amendment to the Master Street Plan. So, just wanted to bring y'all... So just wanted to bring y'all up to speed on that. Councilmember Anderson?
We're, we're okay with, um, with the state.
Well, the state will not approve it till we've approved it. So that's what we found out now. So, yeah, the state, the state has reviewed it. They've asked some questions, but then they said, do you have Malmell's approval? And so we're like, we're working on it. So, you know, so that's where we're at. So, Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was at the subcommittee meeting, so I kind of, I saw that that's going to come up. Uh, the, was this a deal where we didn't think we needed approval for curb cuts and we just suddenly found out we needed to?
Just forgot. No, I, I mean, I, I knew about it, but then when we started the process, it's like I didn't think about getting it with the council. I just forgot. And they didn't have a meeting in June, so that kind of moved us back a month. But by the time I thought about it, I could have already, they'd already announced that the, they weren't going to have a, they didn't have anything on their June meeting. If I'd have thought quick enough, I could have probably done something then, but they'd already put out an announcement.
All right, thank you.
On the Planning Commission meeting, that is. All right, and then, uh, since we have some good news, I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk to give y'all some good news tonight, hopefully.
Oh, yay.
The news that he's referring to, um, we did extend an offer to a finance director. It was accepted. That person, uh, will start this week, Wednesday specifically. Um, years as a CFO, a CPA, uh, financial reporting, everything that we're looking for. So we're, we're happy to, uh, have that position filled.
Well done.
Yay, thank you.
And her name is Ms. Shannon Vega, and she lives in Malmell, so.
Right. Does she have any governmental accounting in her background or?
Finding that person, no.
Okay.
She, she has, she's met almost all the criteria with the exception of specific municipality, um, government experience. But everything else.
CPA, though.
Yes, he's an actual CPA.
All right, thank you.
And then I have one other item to let y'all know about. I've extended an offer to an HR director, and they're considering the offer, so, uh, so we're, one more step there if, if they accept, so, yep. All right. Next item is Planning Commission report, and that will be done after the Planning Commission meeting. It should be, uh, August the seventh. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes, uh, I, I just want to let everybody know I'd, I'd sent an email to the mayor asking him to give us, uh, an update on the, uh, third entrance interchange from the one we had, I guess it was last June.
Correct.
And, uh, I figured, uh, a year anniversary was a good time to do that. And so I emailed him 10 questions. Probably should have asked, have him put in the packet here. I'll, I'll ask to have him put in the next meeting and perhaps the, uh, written component from last year's update so you know what we talked about last year. And I think the mayor's going to do it at one of the August meetings. I don't know if he's decided, but.
Well, I, I'm going to try to do it the seventh. That's my plan right now.
Oh, the seventh, okay.
That, actually, I wasn't thinking, we've got three weeks before the seventh, so I think, yeah, that. But when, by the time Councilmember Mosley sent them to me, like, the packet was due. I think it was Tuesday when you sent them, and so the packet was just about due that I had to get out. So I was like, well, give me, give me a break. Let me wait until August to get this.
I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to ask you to do it this meeting.
Yeah, 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 but, yeah.
You got to put your thinking cap on and all.
Yeah, and I've also, I want to, I want to have a couple of meetings with some people, too, so they have more current information. I've tried to set that up, too, so.
Anyway, I wanted to let the other council members know that we've had that conversation and, uh... Okay, I think that may have everything I, I, everything else got covered that I was going to ask, so, uh, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Any other council members? Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir.
Madam City Clerk?
No.
All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.